...to come out tonight. We gave you an opportunity to ask questions, and many of you have asked questions. What we've tried to do is to take all the questions and to build them into one important question that would cover multiple questions at the same time, and we gave credit to one person, though many may have asked a very similar question. The first question, however, did not fall in that bucket. The first question was a very unique question, a specific question, so I wanted to cover that first. And I'll call your name out, and Trey will call your name out, and if you're present, if you would just stand up so that the audience will know that those who submitted questions, they're your questions and not our questions. But if we have enough time, we might get to our questions, too. Clint Eisenhower, are you here? You stand up. Thank you, Clint. Clint, thank you. They like you, Clint. This is good. We may want to clap between the questions.
I would say we hadn't heard his question yet, and I'm not sure we're going to applaud just yet.
You may not actually applaud on this one, but the first question is, where do you really stand on the ethanol mandate and why? It's part of the energy conversation. It's become a more and more important part of that conversation, so I'd love to hear your answer on ethanol mandate.
Let me talk about the big picture of energy. America should not be importing one iota of energy. We ought to be an exporter. We've got 600 to 700 years of energy under our feet in this country. We have oil, we have gas, we have coal, we have wind, we have solar, we have nuclear, we have hydro, we have biofuels. All of these are available sources of energy. We ought to be exploring and exploiting every single one of them for two reasons. One is to build the economy of America, to make it first. I don't want to make the Chinese rich. I don't want to make the Russians, the Iranians, or the Saudis rich. They've had our energy money too long. There are two reasons that we should do this. Number one is because it's good for the American economy. It puts Americans to work drilling and refining and then shipping and exporting that energy. It brings energy prices down for Americans. Now, I know some people say, oh, if we develop all that energy, then there are going to be some people getting rich off of it. You know what? I'm fine with that. If some people get rich, okay, fine. They're Americans, and they'll spend it in our country instead of some Saudi sheikh spending it ridiculously to finance madrassas that train terrorists how to kill us. I just think it's a better way to make somebody rich. But let me tell you what we don't talk about. If we get energy prices down in America because we develop it and we aren't importing it and we're not being held hostage and held over somebody else's barrel, that single mom who straps a couple of kids in a car seat each morning and drops them off at daycare and then heads to work, when gasoline goes from $5 a gallon down to a buck and a quarter a gallon, we just gave that single mom the biggest pay raise she's had in years. And when that 84-year-old woman living in South Arkansas on a 105-degree August day can't turn her air conditioner on because it's too much to pay for the electric bill, we bring the cost of her electricity down where she can turn it on, set it to 70, and not sit there and swelter in danger. And here's the other benefit. If we start exporting energy and we become the supplier for Europe, Africa, Asia, and the Middle East, and something else happens, we disrupt the entire balance of world power. We take Putin, the Iranians, and the Saudis out of the game. We become the primary energy source for Asia, Africa, and Europe, and that changes the whole balance of power. Putin doesn't have the money anymore to move into Crimea and Ukraine. The Saudis don't have the money to sponsor terrorism, and the Iranians will be sucking sand rather than forcing us to the negotiation table in a stupid deal that ought never to be signed. That's how we can transform the country. As to ethanol, and I know the original question was about ethanol, ethanol has made overall gas prices 16% cheaper in the past 15, 20 years. Now, there are some people who think we should get rid of ethanol, but here's the problem with making that an abrupt change. It sounds typical of what government would do. Government puts out a mandate, which it did, that mandated ethanol. So now people in the private sector go out and spend billions and billions of dollars building up the infrastructure to meet the mandate. Now would the government come back and say, oh, just kidding, we don't mean it? Now we have sucker punched all these people whose investment, not only in the agricultural community, but also in the energy community, have prepared for something that the government ordered them and asked them to do. This is so typical of a government that acts with disregard for the impact it's going to have on the people who took the government at its word. So if there is a long-term decision that maybe we shouldn't subsidize ethanol, let it be a long-term decision, but don't make it so that you once again bust some more people out of business and ruin the lives of those who made genuine, sincere, and sacrificial investments to do what the government asked them to do. We've got enough programs that the government has lied to us and stolen from us. We don't need another one on the books.
Thanks, sir. Congressman?
Thank you, Senator. Randy Page from Greenville. You here, Randy? Oh, well, I'm going to ask a question anyway, if that's okay. I'm going to combine two questions, Governor, into one. Your experiences in the executive branch, there are other candidates whose background and experiences are in the legislative branch. Obviously, not asking to say anything negative about anyone else, nor would you if I did ask, but compare and contrast your background in the executive branch versus those whose background are in the other branches. And also, if you were to be the chief executive, and there's tension between the judicial branch, the legislative branch, and the executive branch, how would you reconcile that tension given your background in the executive branch?
Well, first of all, I think that the unique preparation of being a governor is the ideal preparation to be president, because when you're a governor, you've run a microcosm of the federal government. You've really had every agency at the state level that the federal government has at the federal level, every single one, even the military. And so you're used to looking at the whole field of play. With great respect to both of the gentlemen on my side who are in the legislative branch, the legislative branch is very different. It's a body of deliberation. The executive branch is a body of decision. One deals with the process, the other deals with the product. Legislators have the luxury of taking their time and working through every angle. The executive gets something on his desk, the decision has to be made. You make the tough decision, you follow through with it, and you stand up all by yourself with nobody to hide behind to say, it's on my watch. I did it, and I'll take responsibility for it. Ten and a half years as a governor, especially in the kind of environment in which I worked, I think was a terrific preparation to be president in this unique time in American history. Most people don't know this, but Arkansas was not like other southern states. It was not reliably Republican. It was anti-Republican. I was only the fourth one elected in 150 years. When I ran, I ran against the Clinton political machine, and folks, you've never had a political race till you faced the chainsaw and buzzsaw between Hillary and Bill Clinton. So if people want to talk about, well, do you think there's somebody on our side tough enough to take on Hillary? Well, I've done it before, and I've successfully won, and I live to tell about it. I think the executive branch is an important preparation because there are checks and balances of each of the three, and I think that's what the congressman was alluding to. How do we make this work? Well, first of all, one of the failures of President Obama is that he never understood the nature of the executive branch, having never done it before. We cannot afford to put somebody else in that job who has never sat in the seat of running something. And I think running a business, which I've run businesses, and that's great experience. I'm glad I've had the experience of signing the front of a paycheck, and I don't think anybody ought to be president who hasn't had that experience in business because it's a very valuable lesson in the regulatory overreach of this nation. But I also have learned this, that running a business is very different than being the executive of a government, because in business, I could just fire people. I told them what they had to do, and they had to do it, or they got fired. In government, I worked with the most hostile legislature in America. My legislature was more partisan and bluer than Massachusetts, Vermont, Maine, Oregon, or California. My house was 89 Democrats to 11 Republicans. My Senate was 31 Democrats to four Republicans, far more lopsided than anybody in the country ever worked with, at least in the '90s and up until now. Here's what I learned. I learned how to govern. I learned how to meet with people, understand them. The real work of governing is not what you do on the stage in the spotlight. It's what you do quietly, behind the scenes, building relationships, getting to know people, and actually invoking the verse in Isaiah, "Come, let us reason together." I learned about politics like I've learned in business, like I've learned in marriage. You don't get everything you want. The best political scientists in America actually weren't even Americans. They're rolling stones from Great Britain. Their song is, "You can't always get what you want." And folks, if you go into government believing it's going to be all or nothing now or never, you'll get nothing, and you'll get it every time. We need someone who is willing to go to Washington and actually govern this country, lead this country, and understand that we won't get everything we want, but we won't violate our core values and our basic moral principles in order to govern. And I pledge to do that.
I met Dave Madden just a little while ago. Are you still here, Dave?
They're dropping like flies.
Mr. Madden had a great question that I think covers the spectrum for a lot of us. Many of us question how involved the federal government should be in state education and local education. Dave's question was specifically your position on that issue, in addition, specifically on school choice. What is the federal government's role in education, and what's your position as it relates to school choice?
It's a simple one. There is no federal role in education. There is not one thing in the Constitution. Folks, the ten and a half years I was a governor, one of the biggest fights I always had wasn't with the Democrats, it was with the federal government. A government that always believed that it had the answer, and everything that it funded, it wanted to tie its control to. One of the things I would do as president is dismantle any sense in which the federal government thinks it ought to be mandating to states how to educate the students of their state, because it is not their constitutional duty to do it. That's a decision that starts with mom and dad, then goes to the local school board, and ultimately to the states. And there is no constitutional language that gives the federal government this responsibility. But the same thing should be true, not only of education, it ought to be true of the Medicaid program, which ought to be given back to the states, let the governors run it. We begged Congress 15 years ago when I was governor, begged them to give us less money but more flexibility, and we would take the deal. We would take less money, save the federal government money. We could serve more people. Give us the flexibility, because we knew our constituency better and more how to use it. And every state is different, demographically, economically, politically. You would think that that'd be an easy layup, but not when you go to Washington. It wasn't. And I remember sitting in a Senate Finance Committee hearing, and I explained our program. We had 49 out of the 50-nation governors who signed up for it, 49 out of 50. The only one who didn't was Rob Bogovich of Illinois, and you know how he turned out. So again, we thought, this is easy. And I talked about how Medicaid specifically could be made so much more efficient. And then I got a lecture from John Kerry, Ted Kennedy, and Jay Rockefeller on poverty. Now, folks, I grew up dirt poor in South Arkansas, first male in my family that ever graduated from high school, much less went to college. My dad worked two jobs to barely pay the rent on the little rent house. I understand poverty. My mother grew up in a house with dirt floors that didn't have electricity or plumbing. And here, I'm getting a lecture on poverty by Ted Kennedy, Jay Rockefeller, and John Kerry. And when they finished telling me all about poverty, I said, gentlemen, I'm so grateful that you are sharing this with me, because I never understood poverty until I had it explained to me by you three fine gentlemen who never spent a day in poverty in your lives. This is what's wrong with Washington. The Tenth Amendment is explicitly clear. There are a lot of powers that have been moved to Washington that never should have been there. Regulatory powers, taxing authority, and education is one of them. Common core, which has become a monstrous, divisive, unacceptable poison, originally was intended to be state-controlled so that governors and state boards of education would just improve their standards. But once the federal government got its fickle fingers all over it, it became an unmanageable nightmare. So now we've got to get rid of it, not because standards are bad, but because the federal intrusion into it have utterly corrupted it and made it unacceptable. So it's education, no federal involvement, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. We need to devolve power out of Washington, back to states, where you elect representatives, a governor, who can make these decisions a whole lot better, because they know South Carolina better, than somebody sitting in a concrete building in Washington who has never so much spent the night in South Carolina.
Derek Hendricks from DuWes.
Man, I don't know what it was about your introduction that made everybody believe.
I mean, somebody's got to own up to these questions at some point.
Let me apologize for whatever the senator may have said. Governor, we have won one out of the last six popular votes for president. We have won two out of the last six electoral colleges. As you look at the electoral map, you have to win Ohio, you have to win Florida, you probably need to win Iowa, Colorado. How do you win states that we haven't been able to win in the last four or five races?
The same way I won a state that had never been won by a Republican in my lifetime. You have to go after voters who don't vote the way the Republican Party tries to encourage us to gather them. Let me give an example. I think for many people who are in the game of politics, everything is horizontal. It's all about left, right, liberal, conservative, Democrat, Republican. And watch what will happen in this presidential primary. The fight among the Republicans will often be, who is the most conservative? It'll be mirror, mirror on the wall, who's the most conservative of them all? And we will fight each other for the most conservative label. Quite frankly, if you look at the crowd, and it is a crowd, 374 people running for president on the Republican ticket. Look at the crowd. There are no liberals in the group. There just aren't. Now, the fact is, fighting over which one is the most conservative is really a meaningless and useless exercise. I believe Republicans win elections. I know I won elections. When I didn't make it horizontal, I made it vertical. And here's, the voters who decide elections don't vote horizontally. Hardcore Republicans are going to go to the right, hardcore liberals who go to the left. This way it works. People in the middle who will lean either way, they decide the elections, and they don't vote horizontally, they vote vertically, which means they're less concerned, are you Republican or Democrat? They want to know, will you take us up, or will you take us down? Will things get better, or will they get worse? I believe that if a Republican presidential candidate can speak to working-class people in this country and communicate the Republican message in a way that makes sense to the guy who is lifting heavy things, working in the factory, driving a truck, we win the election. And if we continue to elect people who sound like they're speaking to a group assembled in a corporate boardroom in Wall Street, we are going to lose the election. It's, for me, much simpler. And I'm going to ask you, do you know of any candidate running for president who was able to get 49% of the African-American vote in his state? Let me suggest that there is one, and that would be me. And people say, how did you get that kind of vote? By the way, there is no Republican that I know of in America, black or white, who got 49% of the African-American vote in his or her state. I did not do it because I pandered or told a different message. I did it because my experience is, if you will work hard for the people's vertical direction, they will give you the opportunity to continue to work for them. And the amount of votes that I got from the Hispanic community, as well as the African-American community, but more importantly, from voters that normally don't vote Republican, because if I'd gotten those, I'd have gotten 37% of the vote, and I'd have topped out. To get up to 60% of the voters in my state, I got union members, African-Americans, Hispanics. I got people who were hardcore Democrats, but they were also gun owners, they were pro-life. There are a lot of people that we tend to forget. So I believe that we've got to make our message about America, not about riding the elephant down Main Street. And if we make it about making America a better place for their kids and their future and their grandkids, we'll win the election. But if we don't make that message where it says to that person who came home bone-tired from a hard day's work and had to take a shower before his wife would let him sit at the dinner table, if we don't make it clear to him why we ought to be leading, we won't win the election, and our past is proven as to why.
Governor, I want to ask you one question that's pretty short, and the other answer that may take a little time. Is Susette Jordan here? Mary Mills? All right, both of them right there.
Glad you guys stayed.
Two very different questions, but I wanted to ask them at the same time. One has to do with, when you look at the fact that our nation has 18 trillion dollars worth of debt, one of Susette's questions is, do you believe in a balanced budget? And then the second question is, when you think about national security, I think Mary thinks specifically about ISIS. What's our strategy with dealing with ISIS? So first question, pretty short question, do you support a balanced budget? You can expound if you like. Second question is, from a foreign policy perspective, how do we start diffusing and destroying and then eliminating ISIS?
Sounds like we're going to discuss both wings of the airplane real quickly. Let's take on the 18 trillion dollar debt. It's more than doubled in this one president's administration. He has done in six years what it took the first 43 presidents cumulatively to do. Let me just be very blunt. We're not going to tax our way out of it, we're not going to cut our way out of it. The only way to get rid of the debt, it's going to take time, is over a process of surgically dealing with the federal budget, devolving power back to the states where it'll be less expensive. But the big picture, we have to grow the economy. We're growing at an anemic rate. We're not even growing, we're actually shrinking. We really are, and that's pretty tragic. How do you grow the economy? Well, you can't do it under the current system of taxation. It's why I am an unabashed proponent for the fair tax, because there's an $11 trillion of capital, US capital. This is American money. It's parked offshore to protect it from the tax system. Do you think it would goose the economy if $11 trillion came back to this country because it no longer would be punished if it were left here? That's just American. That doesn't even include foreign investment. What would happen if we manufactured things here again and we put people back to work? The fact is, the economy can't grow if you have a shrinking number of people who are working and a growing number of people who are having to take benefits from the government because there is no work for them to do. I mean, that's an inverted funnel that is working the wrong way. So we've got to make something bold and transformational. When we pass the fair tax, it does exactly that. It has a dramatic impact on the structure of our economy and the way that we even fund things like Social Security and Medicare, because now there's a shrinking number of people who are paying in, because the only people paying in the Social Security, Medicare are wage earners. People who get money off investments, people who get money off dividends, there is nothing taken out for them to pay in. So there's more of the American wealth created in that sector, less in the wage sector, and yet we have 10,000 people every day retiring. It just doesn't add up. So we can make this, we can make this happen. But I want to address that I believe in a balanced budget. I would support a balanced budget amendment. I had to work under a balanced budget. As a governor, I didn't get to spend more money than we had, neither do you and your families, and in your businesses, you don't get to do it. And I think the federal government ought to operate with the same rules that the rest of America has to operate under, whether it's public or private. When we talk about ISIS, ISIS is one branch of a bigger tree of radical Islamic jihadism, where savage people, really, instead of wanting to get us to the 22nd century, want to take us back to the 7th. And the fact is, they're not interested in negotiating, they're not interested in sitting down and having a nice talk and coming to agreement. They're interested in killing us. That's what they're interested in. And the only way we win is to have a military that is so strong, so awesome, so overwhelmingly powerful. And I believe that the best way to keep your sons and daughters and your grandsons and your granddaughters from going to war is to have a military that is so absolutely, utterly, irresistibly powerful that nobody on earth wants to mess with it. And if they do, they're going to find themselves on their rear ends, not in 10 years or 10 months, but in about 10 days, when they find out what the fierce force of the United States
Senator, Dan Horvill from Honey Pot.
There you are. Thank you. For a second, I thought he'd made up his name, so thank you for...
I was thinking I did, too, for a second.
See, he worked for unity, he's standing up just to...
He doesn't work for me.
All right.
I work for him, actually. He's a voter, so I work for him.
We both did.
Governor, respect for and adherence to the rule of law is one of the pillars of our republic, and then as both a state executive and an aspiring chief executive of the country, public safety is one of the primitive functions of government. However, if you were to assign attributes to the American people, you would cite compassion and a willingness to give others a helping hand as one of those characteristics. How do you synthesize all of that into a coherent immigration policy if you were the chief executive?
Well, the first thing I would pledge is that within a year, we'd have our borders secure. And if that sounds like a... If it sounds audacious for me to say, I always point out that 73 years ago, we built a road of 1,700 miles between British Columbia and Alaska, and we did it in less than a year with the engineering methods that we had 73 years ago, under the most adverse winter conditions to build and construct something. Now, you can't tell me that we cannot secure a 1,500-mile border if we wanted to, if we had a president that said, we're going to get that job done. So getting the border secure is the first and foremost thing. I know a lot of people want to talk about, what do we do with the people who are here? It's like having a pipe burst in your kitchen and water spewing all over the floor. You don't turn to your wife and say, quick, honey, let's get in the car, go to Home Depot and pick out a new sink. First thing you do is you stop the leak. And what we've got to do first and foremost is stop the leak. We've got to get control of our border. And once we get control of our border, I'm going to say again, one of the reasons the fair tax will help to end illegal immigration is because illegal immigration continues to flourish, because there is an economic advantage to being illegal if you don't pay taxes filed under a tax form. If you're working under the table, you're not paying payroll taxes, your employer's not paying the payroll tax. It's all under the table, and it's a lot less expensive than the chumps like you and me who've been paying these taxes all the time. So if you take that economic incentive away so that everybody's paying taxes at the point of consumption rather than at the point of their earned income, every person who buys something, illegal or not, are going to be paying the exact same tax. So now you make the illegals part of the tax solution rather than a part of the tax problem. The next question is this: We've argued over how many people we should allow into the US? Wrong question. You see, I think it's not a matter of how many, it's a matter of why are you coming? And here would be my question. As we meet them at this brand-new, secured border here, would be what we would ask. Why are you coming to America? Because if you're coming, because you believe in this country and you love what we are about, you think there's opportunity here for you and your family, and you want to join with us and assimilate into America, and you want to learn the pledge to allegiance, and you want to learn the Star Spangled Banner and learn how to speak English, and you want to celebrate the Fourth of July with us? And you want to honor the history and the future of this country by your hard work? You know what? You're just exactly the kind of folks that have been coming to America for 239 years, and we'd love to have you. Now, if you're coming because you've heard we'll give you free food, free education, free healthcare, you can press 2 and hear all these instructions in your own tongue, you can burn our flag and hoist yours. I'm sorry, but it's probably not a good fit. Why don't you come back and check with us at another time? That's the question we need to be asking.
Governor, and to the audience, we are close to 7 o'clock, and with your indulgence, I would love to have another seven or 10 minutes. That works for the majority of the folks. Is that all right? Can I go with you, Governor?
I'd like a little more enthusiasm out of this crowd over that. Okay. I had to beg for it, but you know what? I'm willing.
And here's our goal in these next few minutes. I think it would be important for us to get to as many questions as conceivably possible. And so we're going to go to a speed round and perhaps get really short answers in an attempt to get as many of the folks in the audience as engaged and involved as possible. How's that?
That sounds good for me.
Sounds good. Danielle Roberts, are you here? Okay, we're going to quit asking that question, by the way. So what is the most important issue facing the country? Is it national security, the economy, jobs, or do you have another issue? 30 seconds.
It is, as I said before, it's both of those, but it's also the moral direction of this country. We cannot be a free people if we're not a moral people. We cannot be the kind of government we were created to be, apart from people who know the difference between right and wrong. And the next president can't just be a political leader, he must also be a voice of morality, reason, common sense, and must unapologetically remind America that without... reason, common sense, and must unapologetically remind America that without self-governing, we can't be governed. That's how we were designed and created, and it has to be that way.
Governor, how do you repair and/or replace the Affordable Care Act?
We've made the big mistake of only expanding into the idea of intervention as a medical practice. We need to be dealing with prevention and cures. Four great cost diseases in this country, cancer, Alzheimer's, heart disease, and diabetes. Each of these diseases are cost drivers. 80% of our healthcare dollars in America, 80% goes to chronic disease. When I was a kid, I remember lining up in the 1950s at my courthouse in Hope, Arkansas, getting a polio vaccine so I wouldn't have polio, like kids two years older than me who had braces on their leg. We said we were going to defeat polio, and we did. And you know how much money we spent fighting polio in America last year? Nothing, because it's gone. If we said and had a president that would say, what I would say as president, in the next decade, as surely as John Kennedy told us, we'd go to the moon and come back and send a man there and bring him home, I tell you, we'll find a cure for Alzheimer's, heart disease, diabetes, and cancer. And when we do, we will save trillions of dollars over the next generation. Alzheimer's will be a $1.1 trillion disease by the year 2050. We're already spending almost half a trillion a year on diabetes, $100 billion a year on cancer treatment, and $315 billion a year on heart disease. Folks, we can't fix Obamacare unless we change the paradigm to a preventive-curative approach rather than just spending more money on people who are desperately sick.
Marion from Anderson asks a question about, what is your stance on abortion?
I believe life begins at conception, and I believe it is the responsibility of the government of the United States to respect that language which was in the Declaration of Independence, signed by the 56 men whose signatures we celebrated this weekend. That these truths are self-evident, that all of us are created equal and are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Equality means that there's no such thing as a disposable person, an expendable person, that the child with Down Syndrome is just as valuable as the captain of the football team, and that for us to deny one person their right to life is to deny all of us the right to life. So I'm unapologetically a person who believes that life should be protected from conception forward, and let me just be very, very clear, we've got to change a lot of hearts in America, but one of the great tragedies for which we will answer to God is the 55 million unborn children who have died in this country in what should have been the safest place for a baby, the mother's womb. Trey?
Governor, Republican presidents in the past have gotten it wrong often when it comes to Supreme Court justices, Warren, Brennan, John Paul Stevens, David Souter, and most recently Anthony Kennedy were Republican picks. How would President Huckabee make sure that he did not repeat the surprises of the past in terms of Supreme Court nominees?
Well, I think some of these surprises are just that, they're surprises, although we should have known something, and President Reagan appointed Kennedy, and there should have been more clues, because so many of his appellate decisions clearly indicated that he leaned a little further to the left than certainly the person who appointed him. Republicans make the mistake of saying, oh, there is no litmus test. And Democrats have a litmus test. You've got to be a hardcore, confirmed, left-wing to be appointed on the left by the Democratic president. And Republicans pretend that we just don't have any criteria. I wouldn't have a political or ideological criteria, but I would ask, do you actually believe that there are three equal branches of government? Did you pass ninth-grade civics? And if you did, has law school, no offense to lawyers, but has law school ruined your understanding of the fundamentals of the Constitution that one branch doesn't have power over the other two? The executive, we always gripe about how the executive overreach is unconstitutional, and it is, but what about if there's a congressional overreach or judicial overreach? The founders built in checks and balances so there wouldn't be, and at least if there was an attempt, the other two branches would have the ability to shut it down and keep it from vesting too much power. I just want to know, do you truly believe the Constitution means what it says and that you should make a decision not based on what you think the law should be, but on what the Constitution clearly says it is? And if you don't like what it says, and if you don't agree with it, or you don't think it addresses something, then it's not your job to create a law à la Obamacare or same-sex marriage. Your job is to refer back to the legislative body, the people's elected representatives, let them carry that through the political process, persuade their colleagues, and persuade their constituents that they need to make a change, and when they vote on it and the president signs it, then you have a different law to work from.
We're down to our last three minutes. So, Governor, do you believe in term limits?
I certainly do. I fought for them in Arkansas, and we instituted them during my political life there. I saw the benefits of term limits. I think there ought to be term limits on all three branches of government. We have them for the executive, and with great respect to congressional members and members of the Senate here, I don't think anybody ought to go to Washington for a lifetime career. Now, what that term limit should be, maybe it's 12, 16 years? I believe that there should be term limits on both the legislative as well as the judicial branches. Now, that requires a constitutional amendment, or it would require a convention of the states under Article 5 of the Constitution, which would give states the power to do something that I'm not that confident that Congress would do to itself. But however we achieve it, I think it's an important part of getting our government to work for us again. Because right now, what we have, I believe with all my heart, is we have the donor class largely represented by Wall Street, global multinational interests, that fund the political class, who dance to the tune of the donor class, and it's the working class out here that are the ones who lose their jobs, lose their hopes, their future, and the middle class in this country is not dwindling because of Republican policies. Fact is, these policies don't change whether Democrats or Republicans are in power, because the same donors will throw money at Democrats and Republicans all the same, as long as they will dance to the tune. The only way that changes is when people go and know they're going to have to go home and live under the laws that they pass for everybody else. So I'm a strong supporter of term limits.
Governor, were there criminal justice reforms that you either worked on as governor or wished that you had had time to work on that you would be interested in exploring if you were the president?
Absolutely. There were several things we did. One, we recognized that we were locking a lot of people up that we were mad at rather than the ones we were afraid of. Putting nonviolent drug offenders in the main population of the prison is a terrible idea economically, because it costs, in Arkansas at that time, we were one of the least expensive nations to incarcerate, but it was still about $48 a day. It costs more money to put a person in prison in your state or any other state than it would to put that person in a four-year college or university for the same year, pay full tuition, room and board, and buy books. So the first thing, if it's a nonviolent drug offender, put them in a drug court, then put them in a community-based treatment program. The last thing you ought to do to them is put them in a hard prison environment where they'll come out 10 times worse than they went in, and they still have an addiction that never got treated. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, build faith-based programs. We use the exchange program, the interchange program that Charles Coulson's ministry developed. It has to be voluntary, but the recidivism rate in interchange was less than about 13%. The recidivism rate for the general population of the inmates is closer to 80%. If we seriously want to create some criminal justice reforms, we make it so that we help those people who are there, who want to see change, get there, and the ones who aren't capable of change, we don't let them out until they are. And we've messed the prison system up in so many ways. The ultimate fact is, justice has to be equal. One thing, and you're going to hear a lot of ads against me as a governor, because I took my job seriously. If you ever hear I'm soft on crime, just remember this, I carried out more executions than any governor in my state's history. That's not soft on crime. But I never did that, but what I did, read every page of that inmate's entire record, from looking at the crime scene photos to reading the trial transcript to the appellate court transcript, every single document, sometimes it was several boxes filled with folders, it would take me weeks if not months to go through it. And here's why I did that. Because if there's an injustice toward one, there is injustice toward all. I knew that there were a lot of decisions I made as a governor that were fixable, revocable, we could change them. If I made a bad decision, it could be fixed in the next legislative session. But there was one decision that I made, one decision I carried out, that was irrevocable, and it could not be reversed. And that's when I carried out the execution of another human being, because that's what the law required me to do. And I want to tell you something, it's the gravest, most sobering decision that I ever had to face. I faced it repeatedly. I did it because it was my legal duty, but I made darn sure that I had given that person the same benefit of every scrap of justice that was possible, because to believe that someone did not deserve that level of attention, if it wasn't workable for the least among us, it was not workable for me. So yes, we can make some changes, and we should, but one thing we have to be clear about, people who break the law have to pay for the breaking of law. If we have a lawless society, we'll have what we had in places like Baltimore. I do not ever want to be a president who would believe that we criticize the police and somehow excuse the people who burned down their own neighborhoods and beat up the cops. This is a crazy way to operate a culture.
One final question, and before I ask that question, let me just say to each and every one of you, thank you for taking the time to come out and participate in this presidential town hall. We, as South Carolinians, have consistently, since Ronald Reagan with one exception, chosen the Republican nominee. I'm very confident that we will do that again, and so I want to thank each and every one of you for investing your time. I also want to thank Trey Gowdy for taking your time and that's in there. God bless you. Final question for the governor, Governor, if you will keep this answer short, that would be fantastic.
Looks like it's time to stand up.
It's time for us to go shake some hands, but over the last three weeks or so, South Carolina has been impacted by the death of nine people in a house worship. One of the most amazing things that have come out of that are two pieces. First, really amazing thing is the power of love. It has brought South Carolina together in a way that very few things has. The second thing that gives me great hope for this nation and for our state is the power of forgiveness. We have witnessed that as a nation and as a state. My question to you, sir, is what makes you hopeful about the future of America?
Powerful question, and the context is even more powerful. Every single one of us who watched the activities in the courtroom, when the family members of the murdered people in Charleston faced that monstrous racist terrorist young man who had sat there with people, listened to them pray, and share God's word, and then stood up and in cold blood murdered him. Those of us who watched those family members face him, and instead of spewing their hate and their anger, they demonstrated the amazing grace that we sing about in our churches but we hardly ever see practiced at that level. But people say, what's the answer to dealing with the race problems in this country? We saw it that day. What's the answer in getting this country where it works again, where people respect each other? We saw it, and what happened that day. At the risk of sounding a bit trite, forgive me if I do, this country is not going to ever be able to be one nation under God until we recognize that the ultimate answers to solve the big problems we face are not political, they're spiritual.